Good afternoon. We're going to go ahead and get the four o'clock meeting of the Salina City Commission underway. Could have a roll call, please.
Sure. Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay. Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
If you're able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Just for clarification, a corrected version of today's agenda was just recently brought in and distributed. The original agenda had page one printed on the back of page two, so there were two items that were omitted. On the second page of your agenda, there should be a 7.4 request for an executive session and then development business, other business, and adjournment. So if you don't have that copy of the agenda, this should be on the side wall. We can move to awards and proclamations, which I don't believe there are any. Citizens forum is an opportunity for citizens to make comments about anything not on today's agenda. I'd like you to limit your comments to five minutes if you can. Or take away the "if you can," please limit your comments to five minutes. Anyone? All right. In that case, we will move to, well, there are no public hearings scheduled for a certain time. We'll move to consent agenda. What we're going to do is actually break the consent agenda and just take each one of these items in sequence. So we'll go for 6.1.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of February 11th, 2019.
All right. Is there any?
I move approve the minutes of February 11th, 2019.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of February 11th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. 6.2.
Item 6.2, award contract for 2019 asphalt mill and inlay project number 90014 to AIPAC Kansas in the amount of $1,449,036.90 with a $50,963.10 contingency and authorize the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding with Selin County to mill and inlay a portion of Country Club Road at an estimated cost of $28,156 plus a $6,844 contingency.
Mr. Stack. Thank you.
Do you have specific questions?
Well, I just could we probably cut you?
If I could add one thing, I think some questions have arisen just kind of about our process that may not be touched on in the staff report. So Dan and Jim and another staff person and I spoke this morning. So I think it might be helpful, in addition to what's in that report, one way or the other, for Dan and Jim to kind of give you a procedural background as well, whenever that fits into your comments, Dan.
Okay. Do I start with questions first, or should I just go with?
Well, that might not be a bad idea.
I just had a couple of questions, and I think that maybe my questions are the ones that provoke this. But just real quickly, I'm kind of relating this project back to what we did on Ninth Street last year, and I guess I could go ahead and hold that down. But at any rate, just in regards to how we work with people who live on the streets where we're performing some of the major types of work, how we communicate with them, you know, what kinds of things are they notified about and how we go about doing that? And then something that I didn't fully understand until last year is that we may have one entity doing like the deconstruction of the street and then another entity doing the reconstruction. And how are we able to hold one or the other, whoever's responsibility it is, for maintaining a drivable surface? I mean, understanding that it's not going to be great, but the Ninth Street conditions last year, specifically at Ninth and Republic, they were just, it was pretty bad. So that's just, those were my questions.
Okay. Well, in general, on the mill and inlay projects, we issue news releases every Friday, basically, when they're working. So typically, the paper journals have been real good about publishing those, and then anybody who's on kind of our website and our Twitter and all the, that's how we get those out. But then on top of that, the contractor has to put door hangers out when they're specifically going to be working on that street or blocking a driveway or closing down the road for a certain portion. In regards to the mill and inlay, it's, that's our typical project that AIPAC Shears has done for years where they mill the road and then they put back the asphalt. They mill about an inch and a half, two inches out, and they put back the asphalt. So that is actually, this project is, wouldn't say the smoother ones, but it's the one that everybody's excited about because it goes fairly quickly. They mill it, they put it back. You don't ever actually close down the road normally. You're just kind of milling through driveways, and people have to kind of work around, they move around, and they move across the road, and they move traffic around, and they, you know, you're never out of your driveway for more than an hour, I mean, as the mill goes by or when they pave it and roll it, and then you can get back. So that, this one's actually easier when it comes to residential access. What you're referring to, last year's project, was more of a major rehab that we did on the curbs, the driveways, the curb and gutters, the storm sewer, sidewalks, trees. I mean, that was a large project that we used, some KDOT funding for. That's not necessarily part of this project, but eventually, we will have to overlay Ninth Street, and so until, when that contractor tears up Ninth Street, that is still out for bids, and we'll open that next week and then come back to you with that project as well. But we've made some changes in that to try to address what happened last year for the curb and gutter project on Ninth Street. Basically, the contractor will be responsible for filling in that part between the asphalt and the curb and gutter with some patching material. And we're using a different patching material now that stays in better. So we've tried it this year, actually, on Santa Fe. Smoky Hill is using it on Santa Fe. It's called Super Patch, so it's kind of the industry term that we have around here, Super Patch. It's just really gluey, black lickin' asphalt that's very good. It's sticking together, staying in a patch for a longer period of time than maybe the normal patching material we've used in the past. They've been trying it out on Santa Fe. It's been working well. They are able, and when I say "they," the contractor who's actually working on the project is able to use it, to get it from the asphalt company, put it down themselves, roll it. They can control their work a lot easier that way, whereas if the guy doing the curb and gutter repairs, he's working along, and then he gets to call AIPAC in to come in and do, you know, two tons of asphalt, it's just hard to get them to do that. And so it's nice when you can have control. We feel like this gives our contractor who's bidding on this project in a week, control over, as they work along, they fill in the hole. So that way, we keep access, we keep people in their, in and out of their driveways, we keep traveling public from, you know, dropping into holes like at Republic last year. So that's the way we think we're going to address that this year with the Super Patch material under that. So basically, that'll, should be a standalone project. You know, when we get done with that project, it should be new curbs, new driveways, this patch between the asphalt and the curb to get us by, and then we're going to come in and do the mill and overlay whenever they're done. But there will, there should be no, you know, urgent, there shouldn't be as much urgency to get that project done. You won't have a big hole next to the road and huge potholes as you drive through, and it was just bad last year, so.
Thank you so much for being responsive to the comments and stuff that we got. Absolutely. Absolutely.
We were stuck with, you know, it just kept getting worse, and then luckily, AIPAC did get in and mill and overlay it, and I guess it was September, but we just didn't realize how bad it would get from June to September. It was exciting to be done when it was done, but it just, it took a while, and it was hard to deal with. So we have, we think a better process this year for that, and we'll see who the contractor is in two weeks, and we will sure talk about that a lot because they know it's going to be a high-profile project.
I guess I'd add a couple of observations if I could. I think after the cold milling, in my experience, that's some of the worst subgrade I've ever seen exposed by cold milling, and so we're kind of challenged by its condition. And then staff did look at bidding it in such a way that the turnaround time was quicker, but the contractor replied with quite a hefty premium to do that. So we're trying to balance kind of a two-week turnaround timeframe to keep their costs, our costs essentially down a little bit.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Back to this mill and inlay project, just in general, we're working on Crawford, Broadway. Those streets are typically, you'll see the mill come through, and they'll mill and get rid of all the asphalt. People will drive on that for, you know, a week to two weeks before they actually put it back and get all done milling. And so there'll be some manholes that are up above the surface. We'll have to deal with that. We either cone them or we put these circular kind of pancakes around them where they are able to drive over them and not hurt your car. So AIPAC and our mill and inlay contractor have been pretty good about that over the years, so we don't feel like the, this contract in itself should not, should not be, you know, we shouldn't see a milling and a blow-up of the subgrade and have them come back three months later. That is not this program. So that's just to be kind of separate. They've historically done a pretty good job of getting back within a couple of weeks to put the asphalt back down and smooth it all up, and then the striping comes in a little bit later.
And at what point, my other question was, and this is the final question I have on all the paving issues that we're dealing with today. At what point, once that work is done, do the manhole covers?
Yes.
Come back and are flush with the surface of the street?
Yeah. This, you know, Ninth Street last year, if you remember Ninth Street, we, that was interesting because they actually paved over the manholes, buried them, and then that was actually probably the best thing because then there wasn't an issue at all. And then when they came back and raised them up, they just, they basically take the manhole off, cover it, and then pave right over it so it's smooth. But then they cut it out, put the manhole back on, and they're done. So that's what they did last year on that street. For this year's project, really, a mill and inlay, you're typically trying to hit the same elevation that was there before, so you don't, you can't really add any elevation. You take out an inch and a half, you put back an inch and a half. So that's, if the manhole is bad now, it's going to continue to be bad when we're done. So we will try to address those, but you shouldn't see, you know, an issue like we've had on Ohio right now where we just went in and added an inch to the road, and now we've got a, the manhole was half an inch low before, now it's an inch and a half low. So that's a problem, and it's very noticeable. And so with the mill and inlay, you're basically putting the road back to about where it was before. But with that, we do have manhole adjustments in this project to try to get the worst ones. Crawford has some pretty bad manholes on it, so we're hoping to address those this year.
Any anticipation that we might address the ones on Ohio in the near future? Because my memory is obviously terrible. I hit the same ones every time I'm going down, and, yeah, yeah.
I drove it today.
And I take your name in vain, Dan.
I avoided it.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
Yeah. Those are, they finished measuring them this morning. So Smoky Hill was out there today with their last measurements, and they're, they've ordered the risers for them, and so we expect that to, you know, be in the next month or less, but it's, they just finished measuring some of them today. I know they've measured the majority of them before that, so we hope, we'll keep you posted on it because it seems like it's a constant question that we have. That's a unique project. We've kind of reported it on lots of Facebook posts, and we're trying a little bit of a new system there where our manhole adjustments are costing us 900 bucks apiece. So we have a lot of manholes in Salina, and $900 is 900, and it's, you know, when you have 200 on a job, it just adds up. So you're trying not to spend all your money on manhole adjustments and not, you know, fix other things. But acknowledging that they're a problem, we're trying, we tried to come up with a different approach, which is basically putting in a riser, just take off the lid, put it in a riser, it's basically an adjustment ring, put the lid back down, and then they tighten it up. And so we hope that's going to work, and if it does, it could, you know, cut that cost in almost half. So we're hopeful that this works. But that's, that's the new thing we're trying on Ohio that we, we didn't have AIPAC fix those. We said, we're going to have, we're going to bid it out and see what kind of price we get. We got a different price. We got, Smoky Hill is going to do those for us. They're going to try it. We hope it goes well because it could save us some money in the long run, but we also have to see if they work. So if they, you know, if we have manhole problems after that, then we have to deal with that. But they've been used in a lot of cities across the country, cities that have major, you know, big cities like St. Louis, Chicago, those, I mean, cities that have used these a lot. So we feel like we're not trying anything new. It's just, we've always just, in Salina, we cut it out, take it out, put it back down, concrete around it. It's, it works, and it's okay. It's just a little more expensive process. It takes longer, and we have a lot of times getting people to do it very timely. So if we can actually buy, you know, measure it and buy an insert, put the insert in, it takes them not very long to put it in, we feel like we could get more done and do it for a little less price. So that, that's the reason Ohio is taking longer. As regards to this project, though, mill and inlay, we have our normal, just the normal AIPAC has the contract to do all the manhole adjustments necessary on that, so we don't see any reason it'll take much longer than it normally has prior to Ohio.
Yeah. I just had a quick question, and I, this kind of goes along with both 6.2 and 6.4, but I found it kind of unusual that on both of those, we had a single bid.
Yeah.
And I do appreciate how you went through on 6.2 and explained the increase in asphalt costs and everything.
Right.
But is this a common, I guess, concern that we get single bids on things?
Yes.
Also, do we have any type of policy that deals with single bids, and at what point do we go out and wait and maybe do a rebid?
Well, we have struggled with this project for sure. This is a million and a half dollars of work. We thought for sure that someday that would bring in a new bidder to town, but it has not, and we have not been able to. We've called Schilling in Manhattan, we've called, oh, the one in Wichita, there's Cornejo and Sons. I mean, they're, some of those companies work pretty close to us as they work on I-70 or I-35 or in different towns around us, but we have not been able to get a good idea why they would not come and bid our project. So we've struggled with that. AIPAC has always been a bidder. They've always been our only bidder. I shouldn't say always, since the last 10 years since I've been here, they've been our only bidder. We did have another contractor in the early 2000s that we actually had two asphalt plants in town, so that was a time when we did get pretty cheap asphalt, or I shouldn't say cheap. It was, you had more competitive bids, to say, at that time, but that contractor's no longer around, and AIPAC has the market for this part of the state. So we've struggled to get another bid on that, and I don't know if we ever will or when we ever will. We try every year, but we don't seem to really have any luck.
I guess the question is, is some of that because AIPAC's gotten the bid so many times, you think people have just stopped bidding it? I mean.
Possibly. I mean, they're local. Arguably, they should be the most efficient at it. Their plant's right here. I mean, it is, they'd be hard to beat, I would think, and.
You say that they're local. It's not just that they're office in Salina, they have a production plant.
Their plant is here, yes. Somebody else has to bring in their own plant and set it up.
So it would be hard for them.
It's just hard. Now, we felt like this year we had a chance because Schilling's working up north, not in Minneapolis, for Ottawa County, Ottawa County or somewhere around just north of Salina. So we've, Kent called them, but he didn't get much of a response, if any. I haven't heard of any response that we got from them.
So historically, we've done, and on a case-by-case basis, we've done the things that Dan mentioned, try to figure out whether there's any strategy in terms of bidding, whether it's by volume or otherwise, to entice more bidders, find out if there's anything that we have done in the way of bidding or the project that caused concern for the bidders. And then the last thing we're left with is just kind of looking historically at, are the numbers still relatively competitive, or do we feel like we're seeing unexplainable increases from year to year, which is why we've provided the historical numbers that we have, just to try to compare their pricing to what we know about oil prices, which is a large determinant of the cost of these services. So, you know, we've talked too about, is there anything we can do to aggregate projects, make them larger?
Yeah. Three million dollar project seems to be the tipping point for we may be able to see somebody else, but it's a, we'd basically have to skip a year of milling and inlay and just do it every other year, which, we could head that direction, we should try it sometime. We just know AIPAC struggles enough to get our own project done at one and a half million, so we would, it would just be, we could try it. It's just, it would be an interesting, we're not sure what to do on that. So we could sure try that some year if we really feel like we can just double up a year. But that's the only, and that's the only thing we've heard from other contractors that said, yeah, take at least $3 million for us to actually want to set a plan up there and come in and compete.
Commissioner Ryan?
Nothing for me. All right. Well, after our sobering, steady question, I think I put one of my questions back in my pocket here.
Okay.
But instead of asking why Santa Fe wouldn't be included now, you know, I was concerned about the timing with the hotel construction. I hate to have the street just south of downtown torn up.
Yeah.
Right after it gets done. Is Santa Fe going to be added to next year's schedule, or are the, is there?
Yeah. We struggled with that one because I think it's the, we actually removed that this year out of the, just to kind of help get our number down to the budget. We thought that was a good idea because of this, kind of the downtown construction and the not, you know, trying to interfere with other projects that are going on. However, it does seem like there might be hard for us to get Ninth Street done this year because our contractors said they weren't able to bid it with the timeframe, so they needed a whole year to get it done. We may not be able to mill and overlay Ninth Street this year, so we may have to come back to you with some other, either Santa Fe or something else for this year. So if Santa Fe, we'll have to kind of see how things are going. I'd like to say that milling and inlaying takes, maybe we could get a schedule and figure out how long it'd take, but they mill it, you know, a week and put it back a week usually. That's about all it takes. So I don't know if that's something that we could handle or the downtown can handle or the hotel can handle, but it's just something that may be a good idea this year, may not. We'll just have to see where we're at in the, in the fall when things are starting to hopefully get buttoned up by then.
As it currently stands, that section of Santa Fe is not in.
It's not in there right now, correct.
And then as we get additional responses from other bidders on other projects, we may have to come back and take a look at the scope and revisit it.
If we can't get Ninth Street done, we'll have to just add a street somewhere, so we'll figure out which one that should be.
And Santa Fe was not selected because it was in dire straits?
It's not in very good shape. You'll see some puddles out there, and it's kind of the last section on Santa Fe. We've done, of course, the downtown, we've done south of Crawford with the bike lanes. It's the last section from Mulberry to Crawford that has not been overlaid in quite a while with the bike lanes and the middle lane and the parking and that kind of stuff. So we're feeling, we feel like that, it's a good button up for the project for downtown and connect everything, but is this year the right year? It may not be. Depends on how bad it, you know, we have the south block done, and hopefully, we'll have the walnut to iron block done in the next few months. That's the one they're working on now. I shouldn't say a few months, but.
There are a few, I'll call them potholes for lack of a better term, in the hospital block, which.
Have you seen those? Yes.
Getting a little dangerous to walk around at night, yeah.
This is a tough year on streets. I guess you'll see, we feel like we've been as active as we can be on our asphalt roads, and we're still getting potholes. It's been tough.
And I guess as an aggregate, most of our questions that we're asking in this will probably make it easier for the other three. I noticed on these four, the contingency.
Yep.
Varied from almost nothing to a fairly large amount. Is there any particular reason for that?
Yeah. Let's talk about that. Seems like with our mill and inlay, that one, we can run into some more, you know, if you mill out a road and you have some subgrade problems, you can, you can get yourself into maybe a little more cost on getting the road back quickly. So we like to have, you know, $50,000 is a decent three and a half percent. That's three to four percent, five percent is kind of our normal contingency. 24% seems pretty high. So that's when we look at the Country Club part, but the county hasn't bid that yet. So we were concerned, they have an estimate to us, but they haven't bid it yet, so they don't have an actual asphalt number. We've, our asphalt number's gone up, so we feel like maybe their asphalt number's going to go up too. So we just felt like we needed a little more contingency there for that project.
And I would point out that's 24% of $28,000.
Yes.
That's 20% of 1.5 million.
Yeah.
So we're really talking about. So we're really talking about sixty-eight hundred dollars.
Jeff hit me just now, yep.
Yeah, it's a fairly small, yeah. The percentage doesn't look good, but it's a pretty small amount. Now, with micro-surfacing, we're, you know, as a, as a staff, we have to basically take this, that nice spreadsheet that has a lot of numbers on it. We, we have to make these numbers work with all these projects. And so for, depending on what the project is, we kind of feel like with micro-surfacing, we have historically had pretty good, kind of have that one, we feel like dialed in. It's, it's about a certain amount per square yard of the road. It, it goes down. You don't run into typically a lot of problems with that. So that one's been, so we just didn't feel like we needed a big contingency with that. And Kent, I think, when we get to the micro-surfacing contract, it's one of the next ones. But I think we, he, he sometimes likes to just hit a round number. That's what he was doing on that one.
And I guess then, if you could give us a thirty-second summary, just to tie all of our conversation intogether, and then we'll open up for public comment.
Okay. For the Mill and Inlay, or just one?
Just six, six-point, the Mill and Inlay.
Just the Mill and Inlay, okay, yep. Country Club Road is, is the second part of this blue sheet as well, just one to county, and we have been looking at that road for a while. For some reason, I don't know if it was in the lawsuit or not, but it was just this one that was held up for various reasons from the former county engineer. We just couldn't get to it. So I don't, I never knew why exactly, but Justin came in, said, yeah, let's get this done, and the commissioners were amenable to it. So they're bidding it in their project. Country Club Road's pretty bad there, east of town, east of Eastborough. So it's, there's some fairly major maintenance that needs to be done. But basically, they said they'd get it fixed, do the, do the overlay, get the pavement repaired, and then do the edge, the edge shoulder drop-offs as well. They do the grading for that and the rock, so I feel like that's a good deal for us.
The city limits line splits Country Club.
It does. It's right down the middle for a while, and then it, and it goes to this, it's, it's an interesting city limits line, but it's, either way, we'll pay our fair share of whatever that percentage is when they give us the final numbers. As far as anything more with the Mill and Inlay, yeah, we just, we struggled with the cost this year. It was up, but for some reason, when we looked at KDOT's numbers, and they told us that's the best thing they have to go on as well, you know, asphalt index is up, four hundred and seventy-five bucks compared to three forty last year. So it's just really, you know, don't see gas prices up that high, but I guess they're, they sometimes, I'm sure, not exactly sure how the index works. Jim, do you have any better, because that's a, that's a fairly common KDOT thing where they index.
Yeah, it's more than just fuel costs. It's more of an asphalt cost. And particularly with asphalt, so they've, they've become so creative that they can break it down and break it down and break it down, that asphalt used to be a byproduct and was pretty cheap. Now you have to add polymers for it to be effective as an asphalt anymore. So it's actually, you have to build it back up to be usable, so it's more expensive. It is a better product, but it does cost more.
One thing to note as well, you can see all the bullets here where we removed some things and added some things, and then we're gonna try this Kevlar fibers. That's just a note, just a, just a note there. We're, something that's come into the business. It's almost like, if anybody is concrete work, you add fibers to the concrete mix, and it helps hold it together better and minimizes cracking more with concrete. They're doing the same thing with asphalt. We know asphalt, that's the main thing it does, is it, it cracks. It's just, that's for sure what it does. So it, you have to crack seal it and overlay it, and micro-surf, because of the cracking. So felt like, well, let's try this Kevlar fiber idea. It's one of the things they recommended, and so let's just try it on half of a road, because then you can, you can really monitor it. Right next to, and one side not, one side have fibers. Well, what better place to try that than Astor right out front of the office? So we'll have plenty of people watching this over the next few years to see how it does, to see if it, man, it'd be great if it could do us a little better on, on, on cracking of asphalt. Because asphalt's very smooth, everybody loves it, but it, sometimes cracks faster than you'd like, so we're hoping that might help us a little bit. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any public comment on this item? Any action from the commissioners?
Mayor Davis, I move that we award the 2019 asphalt mill and inlay project 90014 to A-PAC Kansas in the amount of one million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, thirty-six dollars and ninety cents with a fifty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollar and ten cent contingency, and authorize the city manager to sign the MOU in partnership with Saline County to mill and inlay a portion of Country Club Road at an estimated cost of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars plus a six, six thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollar contingency.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries forward to nothing. Move now to six-point-three.
All right, six-point-three is our normal pavement sealing. Basically, just where the guys seal cracks in the pavement more or less. So we did get some, some bidders on this. For some reason, again, this is up a little more than last year, so we tried to figure out exactly why that was. Little bit higher oil prices, and I guess to kind of be, not toot our own horn, or be, I guess we'll say thankful for more asphalt and more street maintenance money, we feel like our roads are a little better than they used to be. They're not as cracked up as they used to be. So basically, A-PAC bid this last year, and they had trouble actually putting that much material down because there just wasn't as many cracks. And so they had to go farther, and it took them longer, and they're not putting as much material down per square yard, which is a good thing for us, but it does, it's not as efficient for them, and so they raised their rates as well for that. So it is what it is. It feel like we'll have to reevaluate this every year. And one of our, our good bidders didn't bid this, who has historically been pretty low, and they, they got a million dollar pavement sealing contract from Wichita this year, so they didn't, they didn't bid our project. So that's another reason it's a little bit, maybe a little bit higher. But A-PAC's done a good job for us, and we've seen this cost before. We were just bummed to get it this year, I guess, at this point.
To the prior point of, you know, the competitive nature of bidding, they at least had three bids here.
Yes.
A-PAC being the local bidder is fifty-one percent of the high bidder and fifty-five percent of the second low bidder.
Man, you're right.
So, you know, even, even if we get bids, if we're giving them from providers in Missouri and Wisconsin, it seems to demonstrate that we compete with our local bidders, the associated added cost.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any questions? Thank you. Any comments from the public? All right, bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Davis, I move we award the 2019 pavement sealing contract to A-PAC Kansas Inc. shares division of Salina in the amount of three hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty cents with a six thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollar and twenty cent construction contingency.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries forward to nothing. Six-point-four.
Item six-point-four, award contract for 2019 micro-surfacing project number 90016 to Vance Brothers Incorporated in the amount of six hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars, thirty-eight cents with a six thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, sixty-two cent construction contingency.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This, this project is part of our normal micro-surfacing project. Vance Brothers has done that for us for the last quite a few years and done a good job for us. Historically, we have had another bidder at some, you know, from somewhere. So we, we put that in the blue sheet here just to kind of say, yeah, we've normally had another bidder. So we, we called, the Utah contractor is the one I called, and they historically have bid our work as well. But he said, yeah, they were, they were busy and just didn't get to it this year, and they never really thought they could compete with Vance. They haven't been able to in the past. So I guess that could be why we didn't get another bidder. But that's, we feel like Vance has really kept their prices pretty reasonable to us the last few years. It's similar to last year on a per-ton basis, and just, we feel like it's their good contractor and done a good job. And this is a really good part of our micro-surfacing in our, I'm trying to think where these are. These are mostly our local streets here. So, yeah, we're spending a lot of this money on local streets. So we feel like it's a good, good program. As far as notification goes, this is one of the projects where we do let them close the street for a day. So they have to put out door hangers, and of course, we do the news releases as well. Gets in the paper. And what happens with this project a lot is it seems like it's, the, the pavement has to be pretty dry. So, you know, a rain day really messes them up. So what we've done in the past, it's, they, you know, we're supposed to be here on Tuesday, but it gets their cars out and is waiting for it, and then it rains, and so then they come back and it's not done. So, well, we had trouble with them actually coming back the next day to do it, because that wasn't on the agenda. It wasn't in the news release. It wasn't on the door hanger. Oh, man. So, I mean, it makes some sense that they would come back the next day, but we said, from now on, we're not doing that. If they say we're gonna be on this street Monday, this street Tuesday, this street Wednesday, they just make sure they hit those streets on those dates. And so that has worked well for us in the past. They just basically reschedule this one at some point further down the road, so they, they don't, they don't just come back there the next day. They issue, reissue the news release, reissue the door hangers, and then they hope to get them the next time. And sometimes that takes two or three times, but they eventually get there, and most people have been, they've been, it's, it's not fun to come home and have to have your street closed for a day, but people have been more amenable to that than just whenever the rain quits, they start messing you up to the evening hours and the next day when you weren't planning on it, and that just doesn't work for us. So I feel like they've done a good job on that in the past and worked with us well. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you. And any public comment? All right, bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Davis, I move we award the contract for the 2019 micro-surfacing project number 90016 to Vance Brothers, Inc. in the amount of six hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents with a point-nine percent construction contingency.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries forward to nothing.
Commissioners, I know we have one more item that's related to trees, but if I could take an opportunity, I don't know if you share my observation, but thanks to the 2016 sales tax election and the added financial commitment to streets, my personal observation is the streets I drive on a regular basis are noticeably new. I, I wouldn't say improved, but noticeably new. And so I, I find that encouraging. We do, not on an annual basis, but on a regular basis, we contract for street assessment where a vehicle comes through the community and comes up with a street assessment by street and an overall rating. So I'm, I'm actually kind of anxious and curious to see what our paving index turns out to be at the next opportunity when we do that, because I, I think we're making noticeable progress.
When, when is the next one of those going to be performed? Sorry.
Well, no, and it's funny you should ask that, because we were having that conversation. We've been talking about trying to accelerate that by maybe a year, but I don't know that we've reached a conclusion.
Right now, we're planning on doing it in 2020. Not this summer, but next summer. And although a lot of them are a lot better than they were, we still have a number of neighborhood streets that do need attention. So it's gonna take us a while to get to everything that needs it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Stack, I know you hadn't planned to work this hard this afternoon, but...
Tree removal. That's our next project here. We did get some, more than one bid on this, which was good. The actual same contractor that bid it last year and seemed to have done a good job for us has gotten the bid this year as well. Basically, this is, last year's the first year we started this. We haven't worked on a lot of roads where we get into trees and curbs and driveways. You know, we do, you know, Country Club was a project where we did more of a major maintenance, Centennial Road. I'm trying to think of some of the ones where there are a road that's just needs more of a major maintenance. So we're trying to use our KDOT dollars that we get, our federal fund exchange dollars on those types of roads. So this, Knight Street is, is the area where we focused the last couple of years, this year and then last year. Well, when you look at Knight Street, you'll see some of those trees are in okay shape, and there's enough room for them, and some of them are, they're really old and really not in very good shape, and they've messed up the curb, the sidewalk, the driveway, the property owner's yard. I mean, they're just, and they, you know, they're losing limbs, and they're ones that Brett Lamer, our city forester, has to deal with, or the City Public Works guys have to deal with in storms. And so we tried to pick those trees with Brett Lamer, with our, with our city forester to remove for this project. And so that puts us into about thirty trees that we will be removed on that corridor. We're leaving more than we left last year, so I guess that, we hope, hope that helps, is that is a nice tree corridor. Some of the trees are in pretty good shape, so we're trying to keep those, but we did have to remove thirty still. And then we're actually gonna trim a few of them. We decided we're not gonna remove those. We're just gonna trim them, trim, trim the hazardous branches, and that saves us a little money as well, keeps the tree. And Brett thought that was a fine idea, and property owners seem to be amenable to that as well. So we have basically let the property owners know that this is going, this is coming, and that one of their trees is scheduled for removal, and that they can let us know what kind of tree replacement they want in return. So that's, doesn't cost them anything, and they can put the tree really anywhere in their yard, is what we've tried to allow. I mean, if they don't want it back right out in the front, they can put it behind the sidewalk or even in their backyard if that's really where they want it. We feel like we need to be a one, we're a tree city. Need to definitely replace the trees, one for one. It is harder to put a tree between the curb and the sidewalk just because of utilities and just the kind of the, I mean, a property owner is ultimately responsible for his sidewalk, so he, he may not want to put it, a person, he or she may not want to put a tree right next to their sidewalk, because it, you kind of see what happens to the sidewalks along that corridor when the tree's right next to it. So it is a concern. However, we do have a fairly good list of trees replacements that could probably fit in that space. And the North Salina project north of Pacific on Knight Street was a good example, where they were able to put some trees in that space that aren't gonna be, you know, too big or too big of roots, and that could still work along the corridor. So there's a lot of options they have to put a tree back wherever they'd like. So that's, that is the hope, is that we'll replace one for one, and granted, they won't be as big, but some of them have served their useful life. I'll stand for questions.
I think you addressed a lot of my questions. I just wanted to review the whole, the tree replacement policy, and, you know, if, if a homeowner, property owner decides that they do want to pursue that, who do they contact to go ahead and, and, and make those arrangements?
The city forester, Brett Lamer, and that's, that's whose name and number was on the letter that we sent. Or they also end up talking to our city inspector who's out there, which is in my group. So they, there's a lot of ways they can get ahold of the city on that. But they're supposed to let Brett Lamer know by the end of March what the tree is that they want, because we typically try to go out for bids, because he orders bulk quantities, and he can get better prices on trees and tree replacements if we go with a bigger group. So he's trying to get everybody to get back to him by then. And so we'll, I guess, remind them and, you know, do a little pestering if we need to, to make sure that they're, they understand that this is, we'd like to give them a free tree.
Right, right. But that there is a deadline, and they need to, they need to respond in a, in a timely manner. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Any questions or concerns from the public? All right, bring this back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move we award the contract for Ninth Street Tree Removal Project number 9001B to Arbor Masters Tree Services of Wichita, Kansas, in the amount of thirty thousand, eight hundred and forty-five with a two thousand, one hundred and fifty-five, seven percent construction contingency.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded toward the contract for Ninth Street Tree Removal. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries forward to nothing. We can move on now to administration.
Item seven-point-one, resolution number one-nine-dash-seven-six-six-eight, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with H.W. Lochner Incorporated to provide engineering services for the Markley Magnolia Sewer System Improvements, project number zero-eight-dash-two-seven-one-three.
Ms. Dasker, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In 2008, Booker Willison Ratliff Corporation was authorized to design the Markley Magnolia Sewer Improvements, which included services to the area identified in the master plan map in your packet. But in general, it's Highland, Meadows, Hamlet, Woodlands, Edition, Great Life Golf and Fitness, Valley View, Magnolia Hills Estates, and then undeveloped area outside the city limits. The major items in the project are constructing a new wastewater pump station, abandoning two wastewater pump stations and installing about eighty-three hundred linear feet of gravity sewer. Approximately eleven percent of the cost, or two hundred and fifty thousand of the improvements, is proposed to be paid by special assessments, and eighty-nine percent, roughly two million, to be paid by city at large by a benefit fee which will be charged for the property that's outside the city limits. When it's annexed into the city, they'll pay their share to connect to the sanitary sewer improvements. A low-interest Kansas Water Pollution Control revolving loan has been approved for the project in the amount of two million, two hundred and fifty thousand... project in the amount of $2,250,000. It includes sanitary sewer collection system, construction costs of roughly $1,950,000, contingency of $190,000, and engineering services necessary to complete the construction and startup of the project at $110,000. The attached agreement from H.W. Lochner Incorporated, who was formerly Booker Willison Ratliff Corporation, includes the bidding, construction, and Kansas Water Pollution Control revolving loan fund requirements. It consists of three major components, with the first being the bidding phase. And at that point, the design engineer answers questions during the bidding process, prepares and issues any addendums to correct items that may be found in error on the plans and specifications, attend bid opening, and assist in preparing the construction contract. The second component is a construction phase service, which includes interpreting the drawings, specifications, contract documents during construction, attending a pre-construction conference, and construction project meetings. Also includes providing periodic construction services, once a week for 52 weeks or one year for the length of the construction of the project, reviewing pay applications, change order shop drawings and equipment drawings, to attend a substantial completion and final completion to ensure that the project was constructed per the contract documents, and ultimately record drawings to reflect any changes that occurred. The final component is the requirements that go along with the Kansas Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, prepare a final plan of operation, an operation in manual, and we have one year of startup and assistance for the project, and ultimately a final inspection to note that the project complies with the contract documents or to note any deficiencies. The agreement before you today is written on the basis of actual hourly rates and reimbursable expenses with a not-to-exceed amount of $107,925. It's anticipated the construction will occur between April of 2019 and March of 2020, followed by the one-year certification period. A budget allocation of $2,250,000 was included in the 2018 capital improvement program. The loan agreement includes the $110,000 for the engineering services, and the loan repayment cost for the proposed improvements is included in the 2019 to 2023 water and sewer rate study. Staff identified three options for the city commission. The first is to approve Resolution Number 19-7668, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with H.W. Lochner Incorporated to provide engineering services for the Markley Magnolia Sewer System Improvements, Project Number 082713, and a not-to-exceed amount of $107,925. To deny Resolution Number 19-7668, resulting in rejection of the proposed agreement and scope of services, or Option Three, instruct staff regarding amending the proposed agreement and engineering scope of services. Staff recommends Option One. I'd be glad to address any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions?
Excuse me.
Commissioner Hodges.
So approximately $200,000 of the project is going to be absorbed by Valley View Edition?
That's, based on these estimated numbers, the ultimate cost will be based on what the final costs are for the bid and ultimate engineering costs and whether we use contingency. So that's assuming the full $2,225,000.
Right.
Yes.
And then, so the other 1.8 or whatever, that's going to be absorbed by the city at large? Or until the other?
Until a point in time when that area that's outside the city limits is annexed and they request connection to the city sewer system. At that time, they'll pay a benefit fee for that property, similar to some of the work that we did out on the west side of the city for the Water Main Project.
Got you. So ultimately, the costs are going to be recovered?
Ultimately, it's just a matter of what that timeframe is.
Right. Thank you.
Just so we're clear, is there any city at large allocation to some of those existing customers that are served by the lift stations will be taking out of service?
No, there's, those costs are kind of tied into the overall projects that left and the acres that we've allocated it to, if that makes sense. Those individuals in those other areas have already paid their, I'll call it, paid their freight for their sewer system. So the acreages we're looking at are those that are not developed at this time.
Any other question? Just one question. With the three specific tasks, is each task limited to a not-to-exceed amount?
No.
Or is it just the aggregate total?
It's really the aggregate total, and these are our best guess for where we stand at this time for each of those components.
All right. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the public? If none, bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 197668, authorizing the mayor into an agreement with Lochner, Inc., to provide engineering services for the Markley Magnolia Sewer System Improvements, Project Number 082713.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Resolution Number 19-7668. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to nothing. Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 19-7674, extending the compliance deadline as ordered by Resolution Number 18-7577 and 18-7620, related to repairs or demolition of a dangerous structure located at 425 Russell Avenue.
Mr. Pilcher. Good afternoon.
Afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. See before you on the blue sheet there, on the background, there's a background chart there that kind of gives the timeline of what's happened to date. I'll kind of go through the initial conditions and current conditions as what's going on so far, and then the property owner can come forward and talk about what his plan is for the future. City of Salina Building Inspectors performed an inspection specific to the criteria listed in Section 31 502 of the Salina Municipal Code in May of 2018. The property owner has been notified on two separate occasions with violation notice, the first since September of 2016, the second in May of 2018. A permit for repair of the foundation was applied for in June of 2018, but was returned to the applicant for further information needed. The applicant submitted the required information, and the permit was issued for the replacement of the foundation at 425 Russell on August 13, 2018. Current conditions, extension number one was granted, an extension was granted to the property owner on, by the city commission on November 5, 2018, moving the deadline to October 15, from October 15 to January 7, 2019. Since that date has passed, the property owners is requesting an additional extension on the deadline in order to complete their, repair the foundation. Property owners contractors states that bad weather is a reason for delays. Building official has tried on multiple occasions to contact Mr. Sunram on the matter, including five phone calls with messages and one written letter. I did speak to him this morning, finally did get ahold of him this morning. City staff has yet to receive any inspection requests other than a temporary parapole for the permit number 180436 to repair, for the repairs on the property. A site visit was conducted on February 20, 19, to check on progress, and very little has been made. Commission action today, approve Resolutions 197674, setting a compliance deadline agreed upon by Mr. Sunram, and the commission for substantial completion of demolition or repairs, and authorizing staff to proceed with demolition if the owner fails to comply. Number two, deny the request for extension and redirect, or excuse me, direct that Resolution 187637, adopted on November 26, 2018, be enforced. Staff recommends Option Number One, with a deadline extension, and I believe there's some other people here to talk about the story.
Any questions for Mr. Pilcher while he's here?
Staff recommending a date.
I thought that he would be able to work that out with you, and we can kind of discuss that.
Okay.
As we're going.
I guess I would offer up that, as we've talked about it, whether it's this item or the next item, there's a couple of things going on from our thought process. One is just whether it's reasonable to think that the repairs can be made and the housing question can stay in our housing stock. And so that's kind of an assessment of the condition and what the owner might have to say. Frankly, the other is if there's likelihood that there can be some success, we have a limited number of funds for demolition, and that just frees up those funds for, you know, other more pressing code enforcement matters. But it really kind of turns on the practical assessment of whether we have a reasonable, whether it's reasonable to think that the repairs can be made in a timely manner, and that gets down to the condition of the structure and what the owners might have to tell us. I'll defer to Sean and Lauren to see if I've summarized that correctly, if they have anything to add.
You have. No, that's good. I'd also, you know, call attention back to what I said, you know, this did start in September of 2016, so it has been quite some time already. So I would like to, you know, have that discussion on what needs to be done, but I think it's been a while already, so.
But just speaking to Mr. Skreg's observation there, your opinion is that the house can be rehabilitated?
Yes, it is. It is possible.
Well, we have looked at some in the past that were really far.
Right, yeah. Yeah, there have been some.
So you're saying there's a chance.
Possible in theory, but is it practical in terms of cost?
Right.
Right.
Can all of them become practical depending on the amount of money that is put into them?
Yeah. You can fix anything if you're, if you want to, but.
Is Mr. Sunram here?
Yes.
Hope I was close to your last name.
Sunram.
I was far away. Sorry about that.
Prior to the 7th, January 7 deadline, we had two walls of the foundation dug up, cleared of the footings, and realized that replacing the walls was going to be a major task, we'd have to move the house. So I contacted a engineer, Adam McPherson, took him forever to get there, but he got there, took pictures, and stamped a plan for us to fix the walls without tearing it out. And we just got that back a week and a half ago, and took those plans in, and they're in the folder in the permit office. So I'd like another 60-day extension.
Is there a timeline associated with those plans?
I don't believe so.
No, I mean, a permit's good for 180 days, so that, I mean, if you grant an extension, that would definitely, it would coincide with what the permit allowance is.
Sean, to be heard, you probably need to come to the mic.
If, an extension of 60 days would coincide with what the permit lengths of time would be. So, I mean, it wouldn't expire or anything.
So are we talking about 60 days to commence or 60 days to complete?
Complete.
Okay.
I think that's the distinction I was probably trying to arrive. The permit says there's an intention to do, I'm trying to find out what the actual plan would be as far as when it would get done.
What Sean's referring to is there's just kind of a built-in 180-day expiration period on a permit, but there's also some presumption that it can be extended if progress is being shown. The process that you're doing here, you have the authority to impose a different or additional deadlines on commencement and completion. In fact, you've done that on other projects. Rather than just assign a completion deadline considerably out in the future, you've kind of broken it into two steps. Instead, we'd like to see commencement of demolition or repair by this date and completion by this date to kind of make sure the project keeps moving. So my suggestion would be, regardless of what the permit might provide, you're certainly within your authority to impose whatever you might like in terms of commencement and completion deadlines.
Considering the time that's occurred already.
Correct.
I guess I'm more concerned about the, and it's just me, the commencement deadline. And obviously, springtime is going to bring some weather delays, whether you want them or not, but at least it would show something being done. Is there any evidence, any work's been done from the building inspection perspective?
If you, we went by the property on the 20th, as I said, and there has been some dirt, some work started, I don't know if he went inside the house or not, but he did. On the outside, you can definitely tell that some excavation has taken place, and they have obviously done some exploratory on what they need to do to fix the foundation. So they have gotten started on it, but just haven't moved too much further, apparently, because of some engineering.
But the work that's been done was more to diagnose the problem rather than to actually initiate correcting it.
Somewhat.
Two quick questions. One, how long will it take to approve the plan, Sean?
The plan is approved now.
It is approved, okay.
Yeah, they have their permits.
Okay. And then, two, do you have a, to the property owner, do you have a contractor lined up, or are you doing that yourself?
I'm actually working with Deal Enterprises.
Okay.
So, Mr. Sunram, if we actually could possibly break it into three steps, get under contract, commence, and complete, are you willing to commit two timelines for each of those three steps?
Sure.
Could you, do you have proposed deadlines that you think would be reasonable?
Sixty days should be plenty of time.
About sixty, if we break it into each one of those steps, with 60 days being the completion, then the getting under contract, a week, two weeks, and commencing, what might that timeline look like?
Are you already under contract with?
Yeah, we're already under contract with Deal.
Okay.
It's just the thing with the weather, and it took forever to get the engineer out, to actually get him to look at it and stamp it and.
So if we're going for 60 days at 30 days, you know, 50% of the project completed with, you know, full completion at 60?
Yeah.
Something along those lines?
I'm assuming once Deal shows up on scene, he'll, they'll probably move pretty quickly. It's probably more a function of getting in his, yeah, schedule. I didn't realize it was under contract already.
We actually have one wall already pushed back.
Well, I think what I would like to avoid, if possible, is if, you know, if there's weather delays or whatever, finding ourselves back here again, you know, like in 60 days. So if it makes sense to make it a 90-day extension so that we, so that we have that covered, but, you know, you know, but, you know, knowing that the contract's in hand or whatever, I'm fine with that. But just recognizing that if weather can be a factor in this, I don't think that we should think that our weather luck is going to change. I'm sorry, I'm getting pretty depressed.
Yeah, I think a little bit to follow Mr. Skreg's, I think what I would, and again, we'll take comments, but my motion would probably be to commence within 30 days and completion within 90 would probably be, because like you said, that trying to be 50% done in 30 days, who knows because of weather, so I'd rather just have a commencement date and a completion date, so.
I will say it's important that the property owners stay in contact with the city throughout the process. We can't help if we don't know what's going on. So ideally, we don't like to get down to this point and have to do this. So I'm hoping with 90 days, we keep things moving.
So is the site secured from unauthorized access by others?
The house is locked up or boarded up or?
The house is, yeah, the doors are screwed shut.
Okay. Okay.
All righty. Any comments? Thank you both for coming. Any comments from the public? Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium, give your name, come to the microphone. Thank you.
My name's Norman Carlin, and I've owned a three-bedroom house right to the right of it, and that thing has been, this house in question, has been a mess. I've had the house, my house, for 30 years, and that's been a mess half of that time anyway. And there's never been any, I mean, it's a wreck. You have to see it to believe it. But anyway, I have a hearing problem, and I couldn't, you mentioned 60 days, and I couldn't hear all what's decided. I know it can't be fixed in any 90 days. Anyway, that's, anyway, and if, you know, if it hasn't looked decent for as long as I've been there, it's not going to change in no 90 days. And I've lived, I had the house, I don't live there, it's a rental house. a rental house. I've never seen this fellow before. I mean, it's, didn't know who owned it and didn't know how to talk, who to talk to. But I do know that I'm not getting to rent. I should get out of the house. And also, if I sell it, that's definitely going to affect and I'm getting to the years that I'm going to need to be selling something. And I'll lose a good $20,000 as it is now. So, anyway, if you've got anybody, if you've got any questions, I'm not snoring anybody. I'll guarantee it.
And I guess it should be stated that the action that's being requested is just to remove this from the list of dangerous structures. It has nothing to do with the aesthetics of the building?
That's correct. Well, partially correct. Their target, the main topic of conversation has been the foundation repair. However, that is not the only thing that's on the dangerous structure condemnation thing that you guys voted on months back. So, there are some other items that do need to be addressed. However, the foundation is the lion's share of it.
Is everything that's currently proposed to be started within, let's say, 30 days? Would that satisfy all the requirements to get it off the dangerous structures list? Or are there other items that need to be addressed now?
There's nothing new. It's the stuff that was originally on the request for condemnation. I believe there was some windows and damage to siding and other more cosmetic items, but still allow water infiltration and stuff into the building. So, we want to get that stopped as well. But the foundation is the lion's share of the work, but the other items will need to be done as well to get it off the dangerous structures list.
Within, if we give him 90 days, within 90 days?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, have you come back up? If everything on the dangerous structure aspect of the list is not satisfied, then you're right back here 90 days from now.
Yes. And I've actually only owned it for about two years. I bought it as a flip house. So, all the siding will be new, the windows are going to be new, doors, new driveways. So, it'll all be, it'll all be new. But then, within the 90 days, actually, I think it'll be less than that, we'll have the foundation and stuff done. May not have the new siding on it yet, but that's in the works.
I'm concerned that everything that's on the list that renders this to be a dangerous structure is completed within the 90 days.
If you amend the resolution as you discussed, that would be the requirement. So, just so we're clear, all of the violations that were identified making it a dangerous structure would need to be resolved in 90 days. If that's, if that's not acceptable to you, we need to have further conversation this evening about that.
And the two of you are working from the same list of what constitutes a dangerous structure?
Right. And we'll, now that we have figured out how to get in contact with each other, we can, I'll go over that with you again, just to make sure, you know, the stuff that was on the previous list, so that you're aware. But like I said, said before, the foundation is the lion's share part. And if you're planning on putting new siding and windows and doors on it, that's going to take care of, probably take care of everything else, too. So, but as long as, you know, you agree that you can get all that stuff done, I'm good with 90 days.
But, so it's understood it's not just the foundation?
Right.
Right.
Okay. Any, did I ask for comments from the public yet? I did. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Carlin. Any additional comments or any action from the commission?
Okay. Mayor Davis, I move we approve Resolution Number 19-7674, setting a commencement date of 30 days from today with a completion date of 30 days from today of all repairs necessi...
Ninety.
What did I say?
Thirty.
Ninety. I can't read my writing. Ninety days to complete all repairs to remove said structure from the dangerous, what is it called? I just went blank now.
Dangerous structure.
Dangerous structure list.
Second.
If it's helpful, I think Section 2 of the resolution, as a result of your direction, would read that the owner is directed to repair or remove the structure and to make the premises safe and secure parentheses in quotes, "the work." The work shall be commenced immediately and shall be diligently, the work shall be commenced no later than 30 days from today's date and shall be diligently prosecuted so as to allow for completion of all work no later than 90 days from the date of the resolution. Just so we're on record as to the actual verbiage that will need to factor in.
City Clerk has all that down?
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four, nothing. Thank you for coming to the hearing. And 7.3.
And before we begin this, I have an order outstanding on this next project, so I'm going to recuse myself.
All right.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 19-7675, extending the compliance deadline as ordered by Resolution Number 18-7637, related to repairs or demolition of a dangerous structure located at 622 South Ninth Street.
Okay. Like Shandy said there, this is 622 South Ninth Street. This one kind of, this one's going to go into kind of what we talked about in the last one. There's completion or there's commencement and there's completion. They have not missed the deadline for completion yet. That is April 1st. However, the deadline for commencement has passed a little while back. So, that's kind of what's what we're here today to kind of discuss. Initial conditions after the fire occurred on January 2017, inspection was performed and the property owner was sent a violation notice on January 11th, 2017, outlining the damage to the property. On September 24th, city building inspectors performed an inspection specific to the criteria of Section 31-502 of the Slant and Municipal Code, and the building was determined to be a dangerous structure by the building official. City Commission passed Resolution 18-7637 ordering repair or demolition of the structure on November 26, 2018. In that resolution, the commission passed dates of January 11th, 2019, for commencement of work, and April 1st, 2019, for substantial completion of the project. The January 11th deadline was imposed in order to keep a timely progression of the project. Current condition, Mr. Raven camp applied for rezoning of the property to enable a potential buyer to remodel the structure into a multifamily dwelling as it had been used since the 1950s for air based housing. The Planning Commission was set to hear the case in December of 2018 and again on January 15th of 2019, but Mr. Raven camp found a potential buyer that desired to convert the property into a single-family dwelling, so he canceled his request to the Planning Commission. At that time, at this time, Mr. Raven camp still owns the property and has not applied for a permit or started any work on the property to bring it up to compliance with Resolution 18-7637. Recommended action for today, number one, approve Resolution 19-7675, setting a compliance deadline agreed upon by Mr. Raven camp and the commission for a commencement date and substantial completion of demolition or repairs and authorizing staff to proceed with the demolition if the owner fails to comply. Number two, deny the request for extension and direct staff Resolution Number 18-7637, adopted November 5th, 2018, being enforced.
Questions? I just have a couple of questions, just in terms of the Planning Commission process. Mr. Raven camp withdrew the application for a rezone, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
If the application for rezoning had gone through, and I don't know if this is a Mr. Skol question or a question for you, Mr. Peltier, but if that rezone had gone through and it was zoned R3, would there have been any issue with putting a single, converting it back to a single-family residence?
No. What he was trying to do is, following the fire, it had been a grandfathered use.
Right.
And so, in order for him to be able to use the property and sell it to somebody for multifamily, which he thought would be the most, would be the biggest market for the property, he was going to do that zoning process. But the buyer he found wanted single-family residential. And in looking at that, staff would have recommended and approved single-family for that area as in it's already zoned for that and it would be on ideal use.
Right. Right. But that, did the, and this may be a question for Mr. Raven camp, but I'm assuming that the buyer fell through or the sale was not completed? Sorry. So, that may, I may just have to wait for Mr. Raven camp on that one. But just, I basically had a question about if it were to be rezoned R3, it still could have been used as a single-family residence?
We were discussing with him possibly like a PDD or something like that to accommodate both those uses. It had been used as multifamily for a long time. The neighborhood was accepting of that. And if we had gone that way, you would be able to accommodate both those uses. So, either was acceptable.
Okay. Thank you.
But that approach would have been a different zoning and application than just the straight, single family. So, we had options, but not based on the application that had been submitted at the time.
Well, there was actually, we kind of took multiple bites at this apple. And the first application that was brought to the zoning commission, Mr. Raven camp was not able to make that meeting and the Planning Commission wouldn't take up the item without the applicant there. So, we then had that discussion with him again, took a different approach. So, this has been an evolving process and I think that's part of why we're here to have this discussion about deadlines, because there's been some challenges and just trying to accommodate what would make this property workable for Mr. Raven camp.
But as it stands right now, the compliance deadline is April 1st.
For completion.
Yeah. Yes. For completion. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
No, no questions.
One question, and I'm not sure which one of the four of you would be best to ask. I'll just ask it. The action we took in November, I'm assuming was not contingent upon who owned the property on January 11th for commencement or April 1st for completion. So, wouldn't it matter whether Mr. Raven camp still owned it or if he had sold it, then that buyer would have inherited the same compliance date.
Yes. In fact, if you recall, some of the discussion that happened back in November, there's quite a bit of conversation with Mr. Raven camp about potential buyers and the desire to market it and the intention of doing this rezoning more speculatively to keep his options open for reselling the property. But it was all kind of done with the expectation that there would be an ownership transfer somewhere along the line. But taking into account the zoning applicant, the application that was going to the Planning Commission, the January 11th deadline seemed to sync up with the Planning Commission and his ability to get an answer and then move forward. So, I think, I don't think that transpired as expected. And the reason we're bringing it back to you early is that there's an agreed upon January 11th commencement date on the expectation that the sale would have, the ownership would have transferred and something would have commenced, and that hasn't occurred.
So, even had the property been rezoned, sold, the burden of the January and April deadlines would have still fallen to the new owner?
Right. In fact, by code, by our property maintenance code, there's a provision that owners have a responsibility to disclose any type of code violations or dangerous structure status to potential buyers. And then, we as a matter of practice will record that status against the property if we have reason to believe that it might change hands and you might have an uninformed buyer. So, we try to cover that in a couple of ways. But by authority, it does not restart the clock. It's the assumed responsibility of the subsequent buyer, and then we put a burden on the seller to disclose that.
Now, in the case that the new buyer would have come in and said, hey, I bought this property. I noticed it has these requirements on it, we probably would have sat down, had that conversation, and they said, well, I need another 60 days. We would have said, then it's appropriate to talk to the City Commission about that and would have brought that to your attention as soon as that was available. So, we just haven't had that.
But as far as you, you staff knows at this point, we're just, we're five weeks past the commencement date and there's, hasn't been a change in status?
No, not with the property itself. I have had discussions with a potential buyer and contractor just to kind of go over what all needed to be done. But other than that, I don't know even what they even decided after that meeting. But that's, but as far as actual work on the property, there has been, there has been none and there's been no permits applied for.
And as far as staff knows, both from the Planning Commission side and from the dangerous structure side, Mr. Raven camp has informed us that he has a buyer. They're working through the process, working, but that's the limit of information that we have. And as far as that process, it's not matching with the timelines in this.
Any precedent from the past as to how this has been handled?
Well, we do have past precedent of granting extensions on a case-by-case basis. And it really kind of, I don't know that we've been this involved with a pending sale or the hope for a sale. That's kind of a new wrinkle. But as I mentioned earlier, you have the authority to impose commencement deadlines. In this instance, I think you can impose some type of deadline that could force review to see if the sale is moving forward and if we have an informed buyer with a plan. I think the thing, we've been more diligent about identifying and noticing up dangerous structures. And as we've mentioned before, I think you as a commissioner are doing a good job of trying to enforce due diligence and not just let things linger for an extended amount of time and set some completion date that gets missed and then set an extremely distant revised completion date. You have every ability to kind of hold their hand or hold them accountable throughout the process, which I think you've been doing more recently than maybe in the past. I don't know if that's helpful. But, and we can set a date out in the fall. I'm getting a little off topic, but if you set a date out in the fall and that date gets missed, then we start to have a conversation about, well, you really can't get any work done in the wintertime. So, you can't commence till next spring and next thing you know, we're a year out. You have every authority to try to stay on top of this process by sale transaction, commencement date, completion date, to try to keep that accountability there.
Well, I think very similar to what Mr. Skreg pointed out earlier with the last property is, within our core housing stock, you know, some of our houses are worse than others. Some of them have the possibility of being rehabilitated and being put back into the market and, you know, for that part of town and maybe at a more affordable price, which we've been concerned about. So, I think both through the Planning Commission process, I mean, this is a good example of a house that is salvageable and can be dealt with. So, I think we've been with an active buyer situation, trying to accommodate that. But I think it's worth talking to Mr. Raven camp maybe a little bit more about his schedule and what kind of deadline he needs or could accommodate.
I for one, am not interested in expending our budget any more necessary than necessary. So, I'm inclined to be flexible. But there's enough context here. We need to hear from the applicant, I think, where he's at with this by, and has an uncertainty of it.
And I think, as Mr. Lewis raised the point about the prior project, then I think it goes, it applies here as well. It can have a blading effect on the neighborhood. The condition this structure is in, having been fire damaged, creates another consideration in terms of its short-term and long-term impact on the neighborhood. All the more reason for there to be some sense of urgency here.
Question about, I'm sorry, question about process, just really quickly. If we take no action or opt to deny the request if we need to make a motion, is that something that we can reconsider once we have a known new buyer or have the project under contract? Or is this, I mean, this is going forward, you've got to get it done, you've got to be completed by April 1st?
As it currently stands, if you take no action, the January 11th deadline was missed, that violation then means we should commence contracting for demolition as the city. And then we would bill that back against the property. So, without any additional modification, we are on track, in fact, we're behind schedule in terms of commencing with demolition.
Right. But...
We're able to sit on our hands about that until truly the completion date goes by.
No, I think the way you originally scheduled it was you had two deadlines and that January 11th deadline has been missed, which is why staff has kind of called the question and it's back before you today. Without that, any further action, that missed deadline would be the basis for staff to have an obligation to proceed with demolition.
It would be a possible solution to move... Be a possible solution to move the commencement date back and leave the completion date the same and wait to find out about that.
Yeah. My answer just relates to if you take no action at all, you have discretion to set a new commencement date, extend that date, extend the completion date, whatever you see fit.
I think Commissioner Ryan is kind of getting where I, I was trying to go with that.
I think, I think I included in your packet there, the one that we passed last time that talked about the two dates, that resolution 187637, that it does talk about that. If you, if you miss the first date, the commencement date, then you jump to the end where we go, go toward demolition. If either date is missed is kind of the way it's, it's worded, so.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Raven Camp, if you could enlighten us as to where things are now.
Jim Raven Camp, 652 South San F A. Yeah, I don't know where to start. It took for, it is under contract and that's why my copy isn't involved in this decision. But it is under contract and we don't have a closing date yet, but it is under contract and everything's at the title company now to, to close, but we just, we don't have a date set for closing. And so anyway, they have started work on it, kind of cleaning it up with a, they have a dumpster back there now with, with debris from the house and all that, so they're getting it cleaned out and proceeding with it. But I, I guess what I would like to ask is for a, you know, like a 90-day completion to, or 90 days to, well, I might have to have him, the buyer, explain what, what he wants to do.
When you said their cleanings, is the potential buyer is cleaning the house?
Yeah, the potential buyer. So they've already been on the property and started on the property without, without a final sale.
Is the potential buyer aware of the January and April deadlines and the dangers?
Yeah, right.
Has been any conversation about bringing the structure up to date by April 1st?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've discussed it, but there again, with the weather, the way it's been, you know, they, because they have to replace the roof and, and that obviously isn't, hasn't, the weather hasn't been very, very good for that kind of work, so.
Is the potential buyer here this evening?
Yeah, yeah, he is or she is. So, yeah, Ellie Ritter is the one that I have a contract with and Dana Lively is the contractor that's doing the work, so.
And you're letting them work on the premises without ownership?
Yeah. Right. Well, they aren't working now. I, I asked them to, to stop, you know, because we hadn't closed it yet.
Is this a cash sale?
It is.
So is it, is, is the, I'm sorry, is Mrs. Ritter?
Yes, Ellie Ritter. Yeah, and she, she can't really speak today because she's got a cold, she can't speak.
No problem.
But I think Dana can answer any questions that, that would, you would have for him since he's a contractor.
Or is, Mrs. Ritter or the contractor, are they aware of what needs to be done?
Yeah, they met with the city on, with Sean. Both of them have met with Sean in a meeting.
So what's their anticipation that they could, or expectation they could have that completed by April 1st?
Well, that's why I'm going to let you address him with that because he's, he, he would know more than I would.
That's fair enough.
And I just have one more question for you, Mr. Raven Camp, and that, that would be, from your perspective, is there a holdup on the closing? I mean, what's, what's, what's the delay on, on the closing?
We had a closing date of January 9th to begin with and we were trying to get that done on the 9th, but we just couldn't get the, the, there was, there's a lien on the property from a contractor in which for the cleaning up after the fire. And so it was in litigation because of that and we were trying, my attorney and their attorney, we were trying to work together to get that agreed upon, what was going to happen, but we didn't, didn't finish it by that closing date.
Has it, has it been settled now?
What's that now?
Has it been settled now?
Yeah, yeah, they're ready to, they've agreed to everything. We've, we've got an agreement, so.
So is the lien still on the property?
It won't be as soon as they, as soon as we close, it won't be.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out what steps need to, to fall in place to make the closing happen and how soon realistically that could happen.
Well, I think maybe they can, they can address that, so, because it's more in their, in their court than, than mine on that, on the closing date, so. But it, in my opinion, it's going to happen and, and it's just too good of a house to have it demoed. And if it was demoed, I think I explained to you the last time that the city's holding money in escrow to have it tore down, so the money's there to have it tore down and I was going to have it tore down anyway if we, if I didn't sell it or, you know, get a buyer for it. So, or if I couldn't get it rezoned or, but since I came along and wanted to turn it back into a single-family, that's, that was my better route to go.
Right. The contractor, and I'm sorry I didn't get your last, if you give your name when you come up to the podium?
Dana Lively.
Yeah, come on up to the microphone there. Thank you.
My name is Dana Lively. The reason we haven't closed is because there was that lien when we, when we made an offer on the property. We stated we didn't want any back taxes, liens or judgments against property and that kind of flushed it out or brought it to attention to us and we didn't want to assume that we were going to grab that property with a lien on it. We didn't want that liability, so we waited on Jim to work on the closing on that lien or settlement on it. That's why we didn't close. We have done some tear-out and cleanup, mostly fire-damaged stuff, nothing to violate any codes or anything, more just to clean up, make some, you know, get some time on it. And we were aware of the January 11th deadline, but when the lien come up, we didn't feel right to go ahead and close until that was settled. That's what slowed the closing up. We were the attracted buyer because we went to a single-family dwelling. We didn't know anything else about if they would go anything other than that, so we were leaning on that anyway. So we kind of had the cart before the horse and we needed to get it in line. What would be unique for us or, or good, and I don't know if you would do this, since it's February, it's snowing, you know, I got out of a nine-inch snow in Concordia this morning, so you don't know, it is Kansas, right? You know, I've been here a while. It would be good to, if we could, move the deadline maybe 60 to 90 days to stabilize the building and get the dangerous part off of it. And then if I could give another 90 days to finish the project, because we do have a roof area where we have to fix before we can do anything else. You know, you don't want to sheet rock before you repair a roof.
Right. And may it's Mr. Pilger, have you had a chance to review the entire list of
Yeah, I got a copy of it with Sean.
What, get this off of the dangerous structures list?
Yeah. And I don't know what you or Sean appear, you know, agree upon a 60-day or 90-day. I don't know. And the reason I have, we tore everything out to go ahead and draw up a print for, for a permit, you know, because we were, we had so many rooms in there. I was going to have Ellie, I drew up a print and we're tearing out rooms. Of course, they're burned anyway, we didn't hurt anything, you know, it's, it's a good structure, but the back, but back flat roof has to be ripped out. We have to cut it out. It's still strong enough, we have to cut it out rather than tear it down and I don't want to do it in February. I mean, I think he understands most everything about what we got.
Mr. Lively, it seems to me like there's kind of a handful of due diligence items and you've touched on them, but the lien being one of them, the other is just having a good understanding of what the dangerous structure items are.
Right.
And then probably the next step is estimating the cost of compliance and your full renovation. Have you, have you gotten a level of comfort in terms of your cost estimates and this is a viable project going forward?
Especially if you go from a four-plex to a single-family. You can do a lot of tear-out, but it's not like you have to throw four kitchens in there or four baths and all that. You have a lot of extra rooms, it may be a six-bedroom house when you're done, you know. You might have, you might have a family room upstairs instead of a extra bedroom, you know.
So you think you have a good understanding of the scope of the project and the cost and then the numbers work?
Uh huh. All righty. Mr. Pilger?
He'd mentioned, he'd mentioned having, you know, 90 days out to, to fix structural issues and then another 90 days for completion. That's not really what we're, we're looking at here. We're looking at, well, three dates, one for closing, one for commencement. That doesn't mean it has to be structurally stable for the commencement date. It means you had to, you know, applied for a permit, obtained a permit and gotten started. It doesn't have to be structurally sound, but you know, with the, with your foundation repairs, your roof repairs or anything like that by the commencement date, you just have to, you know, get going, show that you're making some progress on the thing. And then of course, the completion date is exactly what that is
Sure.
When you're done. So, you know, if, if, what, do you have any timelines of maybe what, those three dates?
The closing date?
Yeah. Or when, not necessarily give us a closing date, but when you'll be closed by, you know, when.
You mean as far as ownership?
Yeah.
What do you think?
I don't know.
She's been very sick.
Are you willing to hazard a date range?
Do you think within 30 days?
Sure. 30 days, Ellie, you think we can close?
I don't know.
She doesn't know, she says.
I would say 90 days.
90 days.
Well, just from kind of my overly optimistic timeline, I was looking at a closing date by like March 1st, commencement by March 15th and completion 90 days from March 15th, at least of the items that place it on the dangerous structures list. I mean.
90 days? Did you say 90 days to get off the dangers?
90 days from, with a commencement date of March 15th and 90 days after that to have the issues resolved that would take it off the dangerous structures list.
90 days. So it'd be roughly June 15th. June 15th? Does that work? I think so, yeah.
But I, I think one thing I really would stress that, that if, you know, if I make the motion and I'm, I'm happy to do it, but what feels comfortable to me is that we also establish a closing date of March 1st and then, you know, two weeks after that, you know, get you, get you started under construction. Is, is that something that we can stipulate to in?
Just, March 1st is only three days away, four days away.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
I guess this month has gotten away from me. Okay, maybe March 15th is the closing date.
As a commencement date.
And then.
Kind of go like the 30th?
Closing, closing by March 15th.
Two weeks from now is March 11th.
Okay, March, yeah. March 11th, commencement on April 1st or, or two weeks after, what's two weeks after that, Lauren?
That's, it's, it's about the first. You've got the 18th is the following Monday, then the 25th and the first is the third Monday. So you got two full weeks.
Okay. April 1st is commencement and then completion 90 days from April 1st?
So you got April, May, June.
Those are all good weather work months?
I've been in some wet springs. I remember 1992, I think.
So by July 1?
Yeah, July 1 would give you three full months.
Just for the people watching on television, Commissioner Hayes, during the meeting, welcome back. Thank you.
All right.
I thank all three of you for giving us good information today. Thank you. Any, anyone else from the public want to give any comments? All right. Bring it back to the commissioners.
If I could offer up one thing, in light of the potential sale from one person to the other and the closing and everything you've just described, I'm not sure I can provide you wording on the fly for that section. My, my suggestion might be that you postpone consideration, give staff direction as you just described and we can, we can clean up that language to account for a change in ownership and closing and the deadlines you, you described. And that still gives us, you know, ample lead time in, in advance of the closing deadline.
Can't just attach it to the address, the property itself?
Well, I think there's a way to address it. I just don't know if you want to see us make the sausage between Greg and me to come up with that wording on the fly versus postpone it.
Is that a challenge?
Commissioner Hodges has a, has a plan and a time, yeah, timeline. I think you're generous, but if it, all parties are agreeing, it sounds good to me.
All right. Well, I'm going to take a swing at it. I move that we approve resolution number 19-7675, changing the following in section The second sentence will read, "The closing on the property shall be completed no later than March 15th."
Committed or commenced?
The, the, the sale of the property shall be completed by March 15th with a project commencement date no later than April 1st and a completion date 90 days from April 1st, which would be July 1st, 2019. And shall be diligently prosecuted so as to allow for substantial completion of all work no later than July 1st, 2019.
Is there a second?
I was looking to staff to advise us before a second.
The only, the only question I had for the city attorney is just, we're, we're recognizing a change in ownership and we have language about the owner shall, so I just want to make sure that we're comfortable that, you know, we have, we've set this up for a transfer of ownership. The conversation certainly, and the record certainly demonstrates that, I just want to make sure we're comfortable with the wording.
And I just quickly suggested possibly referring to the record owner so that it...
I would, I would amend my motion to let it reflect the record, the owner of record or the record owner.
And if I may, just to be absolutely sure, to clarify with the applicant, am I correct? We are talking about a contract of sale rather than a contract for sale where the deed would be escrowed?
Can you explain that a little bit?
When you close, title will transfer. Am I correct? There's no, it is not a contract for deed arrangement?
Once we close, there'll be.
Okay, thanks.
Is it appropriate to ask a question about the wording before it's seconded? That's the answer I thought I was going to get.
Sure. No, I think it's fine. I think it's fine to get that clarification.
The way it's stated now, there's no mention of what happens practically speaking if the sale does not occur. In other words, we don't necessarily revert back to the equivalent of taking no action today. So this would extend things sale or no sale?
Well, yes. Actually, section three currently reads, "If the owner fails to commence the work or to diligently prosecute the work until the work is substantially completed, all within the time stated, the governing body will cause the structure to be repaired or razed and removed." So failing to meet those deadlines without further extension of those deadlines would result in us proceeding to demolition. However, we may need to amend section three in light of the amendment to section two because currently we're talking about commencing the work and diligently prosecuting the work and we have a closing deadline inserted as well. So it probably needs to read, "If the record owner fails to," how did you word it? Close on the property, commence work or diligently prosecute the work all within the time stated, then I think we're, once again, we're good.
If we're just referring to the owner, do we... If we're just referring to the owner, do we even need to make a reference to the closing?
Well, you've imposed a closing deadline in Section 2, and I think you need to carry it into Section 3, is my only point. Because Section 3 only refers to commencement and completion when...
But if we took ourselves out of the ownership conversation?
Oh, if you didn't have that as a deadline, you mean?
And just set the commencement and the completion dates and left closing out. And then it's up to them to deal with the ownership.
It puts the pressure on them to consummate the deal as soon as possible.
But we have extended the deadline until July.
That is a possibility. I guess as a governing body, you need to decide which approach you wish to take, and then we can assist you with the, the appropriate amendment language.
And just as the person who made the, the motion, all I'm trying to do is to avoid having us come back here in another week and have the same conversations. So if there's a, there's a better way to get around it, I'm all for it.
And my reason for asking about removing the closing is if the closing doesn't occur by March 5th, let's say it closes March 18th, we don't have to come then deal with another missed deadline, even though those other dates would be...
Yeah, it cuts both ways. You wouldn't be back here, but we wouldn't be in an enforceable position until that commencement deadline. So it just kind of extends that initial stage.
And that's why I would just like, I mean, just to, to advocate for, including the closing date, is that it, hopefully we'd have some urgency and see that there is actually an intention and a willingness to go ahead and purchase the property and begin all the work that needs to, to done. I just don't want to kick it far enough down the road that now we're, you know, we're a couple of weeks past the, the April 1st commencement date, and, you know, we're entering round three or round four or whatever.
So if there was no closing, would we then proceed with demolition?
Well, the way it...
As proposed, yes. Now, I guess one question is, if it fails to close, does Mr. Raven Camp have any interest or intention to proceed with renovation? Because if that's the case, then closing is only pertinent with one buyer, not the current owner, if you understand where I'm, what the point of trying to make there. But I think that's the question.
He'd have the option to pursue another purchaser and time to work with it, right?
In that scenario, with April 1, I'm trying to make sure I'm following the dates here. If April 1 is commencement, then yes, he, he would have additional time to pursue another potential buyer. Part of the question just becomes how long this, how long you're willing to let this process play out and when you would like to take action.
Well, I tell you what, I think the first thing I'd do is probably withdraw my motion so that we can have this conversation. So consider it withdrawn, Shandy, and we can figure out how, however the best way to word this is.